Okay, let's call the meeting to order. It's Tuesday, April 5th, 2016, 9:00 AM. Minutes of reports received and filed?
We have the reporters' March 2016 case file, and the clerks' March 2016 D, and the sheriffs' March 2016 D filed.
Commissioner liaison reports, upcoming meetings, events?
Coal County Communities Meeting on that Thursday morning. We got our salary study meeting Thursday. YP lunch with leaders Thursday. Are you going to that too? You went to something?
No, I went to something with YP already.
Okay, so they got tired of you already?
I guess.
Cool. I qualify for meeting. Coal County Extension Thursday night. Renegades Coffee Friday morning, and the radio Friday morning. That's about it.
I got a meeting in the Capitol on Wednesday at 9:00. Senator Keough and some others. And Sleep America Meeting Wednesday noon. That's all I got.
Tomorrow, Chris, is it National Walking Day? Do we need to do anything?
If you want to be in it for the Friday, just email to Ashley or send her your application. I've seen that reminder today.
Should you have running shoes on? Tennis shoes?
Anything. Larry said they've got some steel-toed tennis shoes, and that would work, so we're gonna get on.
Should you have running shoes on now for running back? At least you have walking shoes, not tennis shoes. It's not tennis, buddy. Come on, guys.
We do have Warren on Friday.
You can't wear your foot well.
I can do Warren or do you want to do?
Or your dog.
I can do Warren Friday, or do you want to do Warren again?
I do. That's why I didn't say it.
Is it about my turn on Friday?
Well, probably not.
I wouldn't mind going up there again before he's retired.
Go ahead. Okay, you do it.
Friday?
I'll tell Warren you're doing it, and then my dog will.
I think he should retire earlier than me.
Okay. And the only thing I've got Saturday is the YMCA Black and White Ball. Okay.
Mac Legislative next week too. That's Monday, Tuesday. Monday, Mac Legislative Conference.
I know we've got the fifth. I don't think I did. Maybe we've got the fifth. My God, that's a book. So, presentation from staff, hazardous mitigation plan or review?
Yes, as you remember, a few months ago, we came to the commission. Ed and Susan, Professor Ed. This is the contract that every five years by FEMA, Federal Emergency Management, we have to redo our hazard mitigation plan for the county and city. So this is just kind of an update. We're probably two, three years away from being finalized, so the piece of paper I laid there is kind of the summary, and I'll let Susan get up and talk. She's done a tremendous amount of work on that. We've had six meetings so far. This is due May the 9th, back to FEMA. And then once we're approved, our plans in place for the next five years. So you can see on there the jurisdictions of Susan, if you want to come up and let us know. It's been a very good turnout from the city and the county. So she kind of explains them and what we've done.
Yeah, we've had a really good turnout. You can see the jurisdictions have participated. We're still hoping to get contacted, so we have been in time to plan to be around plan last time, especially since we've been annexing, increasing their areas so much, so that's a couple of issues there. We've had great cooperation from the water districts, the Zuri American Water, the utility companies. We have the pipeline there, the electric co-op. They all came and helped us out with talking about utility managers. This time around, we've changed it from just a natural hazards mitigation plan, which is what's required to an all hazards mitigation plan. So we've included, like you see there under major change to the plan, we've included all these human and technological-based hazards. And I think that's been very educational for a lot of people in the county. We've gotten a lot of good information, had a lot of help. We had somebody from the Jefferson City IT Department coming and talking about side rain tap and things like that. New actions in the updates, develop continuity of operations plans. That's something that at the Midmore RPC, we've been really pushing throughout the region, because we've found out that most of our cities and counties don't have plans to how to keep their business going if there is a disaster. And we held trainings on that a few years ago in each of the counties, and that's something we really are trying to get in all hazard mitigation plans, because people's focus is usually on taking care of everybody else that you have responsibilities to. But if you can't pay your staff, if you can't keep your own business going, if this was serious. And that's something that has identified after Jock Warren, tornado, that was a big gap for cities, counties, and small businesses, because they didn't have their own plans in place of how to keep their businesses going. So we encourage anybody here at the county, representatives of cities, to look very seriously about that. One thing that Larry brought up is needing a minimum of understanding between Coal County, that city, public works, and the smaller communities about assisting with public works assistance when we get into these emergency and disaster situations. So we put that into the plan, and hopefully that'll get done in the next couple of years. Bill, we're putting in develop a debris removal plan. I think that's a requirement somebody at someplace else.
Or, yes, Susan.
And then another thing was promote knowledge and volunteer participation with Save Coalition. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill or Larry, but I think that's where volunteers are trained to go in and assess buildings after, say, if there was an earthquake, to, you know, tag stuff about, let's say, going to.
That is best of the point.
Bill said the draft plan is due by May 9th. We're on schedule to get that in, and the final plan is due August 9th. What Bill and I would like to do is come back. Each of the plan needs to be adopted formally by each of the jurisdictions. So we'd like to come back sometime middle of May to the county commission and ask for you to formally adopt the plan as your mitigation plan, and we'll have resolutions that need to be done. So that's the... On the other side, I just kind of put in the, just to show you what kind of work we have to go through. The risk assessment, the top is just text of natural hazards, what's the most vulnerable to. The middle line there, high probability, increasing vulnerability. This is pretty much, there was in 2014, there was a national climate, global climate change, I can't remember how it was, assessment done in 2014, signed on to by almost all the federal agencies. I think it was NASA, NOAA, they were the ones that kind of spearheaded it. And what they know, the hard fact about the way the climate's changing at the moment, no matter where that change is coming from. What they know is extreme heat is getting worse. Sudden downpours, where just buckets come down within, you know, a minute, are getting much worse. And that's increasing flash flooding, which is a big problem for all of Central Missouri. And then severe weather, weather is getting worse. And I think we've seen that. We've had a lot of disaster declarations with severe weather and weathering. And then that colorful chart is what we went through and assessed the risks, both the probability of having a type of event, of technological or human-made, and the severity that it would be if it did happen. So, pretty much, the, on the bottom of the front page shows the website. The plan is online, both the old plan and the updated version, at that link for people to look at, send me comments, questions, criticisms, whatever. And like to, that's about it. Somebody has any questions?
Ed, if we did a suit plan from the county and city together, I know we've got partials, but I think it's something we really need to look at. Is that something RPC would have grand money to do with?
You can do nothing.
A suit plan from county? Or we could develop one plan? I know we've got some things in place, but probably not all of our slide records and stuff like that.
I hesitated because we just turned in some projects where we had access to some funds that were that perfect. So I think those projects, if there's some flexibility and we delta new funds around, we could do something if you guys truly have an interest in getting it, going through the continuity of operations.
Really get our plan. I think we've got some probably in place, but with the whole county business as a whole, with Dufflin totally wiped out, how we've sustained business, it's not a record either, stuff like that. So that's something we'll look at.
I mean, Bill, I'm gonna interject. If you guys have an interest in doing it, we'll try to find some money to make it happen.
Additional?
Sheriff's Department is the bigger one, the money coming into the counties. And then we have some insurance coverage for the disaster that may happen, and that we have to move the location, you know, we need to keep collecting documents. We need to, you know, figure out the money stream. We do have some coverage, but to have a plan in place is very good.
I'm not even saying one. I know we've got some stuff in place, and I think this first I have it. We place it all on the, kind of, well, hey, we're all what we've been doing, but it's something that we have to do, like I said, every five years. Our Midmore Regional Planning has done an excellent job. The way it is five years ago. This year, we've redone it. It takes a lot of meeting with a lot of people. Public Works, a lot of our emergency services, city, county, villages are all there. Like she mentioned, Ujelly, Street River, Amherst, UV, Phillips, Conover Pipeline. That's a plan for the whole county, it's pretty important to do it, so we appreciate it. No action to be made today, it's just an update.
Great. Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank Susan.
Thank Susan.
Do you live there in Coal County?
Pardon?
Do you live in Coal County?
No, I'm afraid I live in that northern town.
Just gotta send you a happy vote, make sure.
Go vote anyway.
Please, please. Okay. I think I have really well. There's a contract, a contract amendment for WIC, contract for DHSS.
This is a very cool contract amendment that basically just changes the address where we send our correspondence to the.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are going to move our roof replacement down to the special capital expenditure, so we're gonna go to the signing of Lucas PM Ship and Repair Services.
This is for the five Lucuses we got in this year that completes the phase in for. Will you come up here? Service repaired for the five Lucuses that we got this year. This finishes the phase in for the Lucas devices. It's just a service agreement for sending those in. For the statute requires to be able to show that they had been repaired or serviced, calibrated on a yearly basis.
So this isn't covered under our maintenance agreement? Don't we have a maintenance agreement on the Lucas devices?
That is the maintenance agreement.
For the new one?
For the new, for the.
The new one?
The new one.
This is into, so this for just the five?
Yes, because the Lucas we bought, five last year and five this year. Whereas the monitors, we did a full five last year. So it's the five last year and five this year, and two separate agreements.
Is this a yearly amount, or just for the four years?
Yeah, I sent you guys the email. I should have brought that. It broke down to, what's the total? That was four years.
Twenty-three eight.
So that was for the four years.
Four years. Paid for yearly, or?
Yes, beginning next year.
First year's free, and then start paying after that. Okay.
You're the ones that got signed, right?
Good. I move that we sign the agreement for maintenance for the new Lucas devices.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Contract amendment for DHSS School Wellness Project.
I don't know. We should figure stuff.
Did you high-five them?
So we have the. Thanks, School Wellness Project, that we are working with two area schools and one school dropped out. So they are owing our contract amount from $5,000 to $2,500.
Good work.
Rest in peace. Well, it's a lot of work for the schools. They have to do a lot of things. I guess they decided they didn't have time for this year.
I move that we approve the contract amendment with DHSS for school wellness.
Second. All in favor? Discussion approval of real estate sealed bids?
The only interest we got was into the two Osage City lots. Both of those did sell to the same person, Gordon Diana Johnson, in the amount of $3,260 each. So I have this for you to sign, basically accepting their bid. They're supposed to be bringing the balance that they owe later today. And then when that clears, Jill is working on a quit plane deed. And so we'll do it that way unless there's any objections. But today, I just need you to sign this, if you don't mind, and then kind of direction on where you want to go with the two that did not sell, if anything.
Give it to the city. Isn't that how a state does it, if they don't want something, they give it to the counties?
I did, I did mention. That one guy had kind of expressed he was interested, but I guess he's not after all, so.
Dale got the ones down in Osage City. Okay, good. Because he's been cleaning things up and working it.
Guess we just have to give Chelsea one of the, because we're gonna give her.
There you go.
City, so.
There you go.
We have baby friends.
We do have the ability to vacate that and just give it to the property owner, don't we?
The ones that are adjacent to it, or whoever owned it before? Did they ever say they wanted it back, or they say they don't want it?
I know there were some interests out there on the one on West Haven or back there at Natter.
Can we just check with them and see, and then if they want it, then that's what either direction we could add?
What if they don't want it? So we give it to them anyway?
See if anybody adjacent to it wants it, maybe put it out there, bid again, am I coming off it all?
I sent letters to all the adjacent property owners.
They may not want to pay for it, though.
Yeah.
Or go through the headaches of writing a check, and, you know. So for a dollar, they might take it.
You know, when we vacated Grove Parkway and stuff past, we assigned it over to the adjacent landowners. That's something we pull up into, if that's what you want to do.
Say if they want it, then let's do that.
Yeah, I'd like to get, I'd like to get rid of it.
Yeah, I'm for getting rid of it. I don't really, you know. We vacated, they take it, in our business. And we can contact landowners out there and see what they say.
Why don't, yeah, why don't you?
That's one. Big Horn, Big Horn, and the one down.
I sent letters to all of them.
They probably just, much as we.
And they probably maybe didn't realize there was no reserve at all, you know, because I should have forgotten.
That's fine, so you need to accept these offers. I move that we accept the offers for the Osage City properties.
Second. All in favor? Okay, accounts payable reviewed?
Accounts payable is free.
That's a common. Let me check with.
I never have a shortage of those either. I'd like to get down just the right checks, keep up. Government does it that way, why not?
They just not write in checks.
Have people knock it on the door more than they were.
Vacation of Stormwater Easement Lot 19 and 20, Heritage Hollow, Section 1.
Public Works was approached by Central Bank who took a burning interest in heritage hollow states from the clusturants. And what happened with this one, as you can see, attached to the court order is an aerial photo of the area of the Stormwater Easement. There's actually a sanitary sewer in Stormwater Easement. But Central Bank has approached the city to vacate the same portion of the easement, the sanitary sewer. And we are looking to vacate the Stormwater Easement. When they originally set up the sanitary and Stormwater Easement in this area, there was a pretty good area of a ditch down through there. This has been with a pipe in it now. So the width of the Stormwater Easement is no longer needed. And if this area is vacated, they can use that area, they can build upon it, build a home on there. Be able to set them back further from the streets, which is what prospective landowners are looking into. They'd like to set the homes back a little further. And with the vacation of the Stormwater Easement, the empty sanitary eventually by the city, they'd be able to do that. It's not an area we need. We've got plenty with the portion that will remain since the pipe and inlet are in there at this time.
We have no issues with it, because as you said, if it. If they had this whale in there, it would have taken up a lot more, since it now since piped it, which the original landlord didn't want to do. You know, if everything works out well, we don't need the additional area.
We should have copies here, Sam. I think it's underneath there. I think there's one for you to sign.
So the sewer runs?
The sewer runs right down the rear, you can jump to, it runs down the back of the lots.
Down the property lot?
It goes up together, yeah.
Okay.
And originally, I think we were gonna put it out further into the lot. When it was constructed, it was basically on the property lot. They hit a lot of rock further up, that's all they got, is from what I understand from the city.
But they piped this stormwater, so you essentially don't need this.
Right.
Bottom line.
Exactly.
Bottom line. There is one, didn't want to pipe it, because it's trying to save some money. Actually, probably gonna make more money, be able to sell off the lot.
So stormwater comes from the street through the properties to the back, or?
Actually, all fumbles down from the tops, and it's all downhill through there. There was a natural swale through there anyway.
I just, I don't know, I was looking to use it. There wasn't an easement all the way down through there or something, just looking at it from down by that area, so.
It's kind of the natural drainage from each of those streets coming down.
Just a ditch? I move that we vacate the right way.
All in favor?
Aye. That's what you needed, wasn't it?
Yes. All three, you would need to sign the court order.
How many copies have to be signed?
Just one. One to be reported, is my understanding.
Sorry, boss.
What do you need, a motion to sign the court order then, or?
It doesn't hurt, go ahead.
I move that we sign the court order to vacate.
I already signed it. Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
This will be done on Tuesday. We got all day?
No, because the.
Just say a plan was made.
First guy be in here, they're gonna bring in pizza later for us someday.
Pizza?
Sounds good. Okay, I think we're gonna combine the bid discussion for the roof replacements various locations and discussion of capital expenditures.
Larry, you all need these extra copies?
Can't have both the court orders, those are copies.
Those are, they're not signed. Said you only needed one. I'll do that. What are we doing here, boss?
We are going to do a discussion of capital expenditures and the bid discussion award for 2016-08 roof replacements various locations.
I'm wondering how much ones we're gonna do?
Yep.
Yes?
I mean, I don't know if you want to discuss the, what's left, what's the cash balance, and what projects we have in encumbered at this time, or make the decisions on the roof?
Well, so I was, I was kind of wanting to see what our, what our current balance is in the capital, after what? After we had encumbered everything that we have under contract currently. See what's remaining, see what we're gonna bring in for the remainder of the year, and try to get, get an idea of what we want to get done this year.
Currently, we have a $559,000 cash money. After the encumbrances of other projects that we have out there, you actually have cash money, $336,000. With that, the remainder of this year money, you will be taking in, sorry. There's another $646,000 rough.
So we got roughly $900,000 to play with, but not right now.
I was talking to Greg a little bit about our roofs. And I know Chris, these needs to be done. And then we're talking about doing this building, and maybe trying to get this building all done, do the HVAC, and then we're done. And then next year, we could do Carnegie, do their roof, and siding, yeah, the touch point. And so, I don't know, that was just, that was just something we had kicked around, was trying to.
And below there was the list of projects that you guys talked about at the beginning of the year that you wanted to look into, the ones in blue. And some of the ones that I've already, that we've already done, I've kind of taken them off the list. By building, then, this is the Annex Building. Like you said, you talked about the HVAC, and then, I'm not sure if you, that was the roof itself?
Mm-hmm.
Two of the projects, the Carnegie Building, you talked about the boiler.
Where's that at? Is that on there? Is that Def Drive?
Yes. Their project 2016. I think I sent it to you in an email, I think.
Okay, that's why I was looking for this now, that we planned it out, so I was trying to cheat, get it quicker, so. Total of all fronts? When'd you send it, just like?
Thursday or Friday.
Go ahead, my product system is objective. It's not my fault.
And the Carnegie Building, you talked about replacing the boiler, and then the brick project is right there. And I'm not sure if those really came into the right, are the right bids that came in, I'm not sure. But then we talked about the courthouse building itself. The only thing I still have besides the windows, obviously, they're working on it, is the sidewalks and handrails and stuff around the building. There's other stuff there, but we, that was not one of the big ones we talked about today.
I think after they get the windows done, probably our sidewalks are gonna be in worse shape than they are now, which is not very good.
And what was on the health department's list are things you want to look at. Again, I'm sure it was just the roof, but there are other issues out there, you know. The windows, the HVAC. And then Juvenile, we talked about the generator again. I'm not sure. I had Greg over there doing something on that. And then we talked about the door replacement, which, I'm not sure, I don't think, no, I didn't have that up the bunch. We haven't really did that yet.
No, we haven't fixed doors or anything. We're just supposed to look at getting prices for that stuff possibly next year.
We also talked about the parking lot. I don't know if Larry ever fully got us an estimate on that.
Well, we're, we should get, I'll step up and call him.
And then we talked about replacing the two units. Maybe what you're doing now to care of them, I don't know. EMS building?
Yeah, we're talking about that.
Okay, then I didn't get put two and two together, though.
Yeah, that actually came in about $9,000 under what that estimate was. Yeah, that actually came in about $9,000 under what that estimate was.
So.
So on the Carnegie, that boiler, is that something?
We're going to have to do that this year.
Okay.
The other one that finished 1971 and started leaking at the end of this year.
So that would be the only thing we would really have to do on the Carnegie building this year.
Which one was that?
Carnegie and most of the boiler.
Yeah, we'd wait, try to wait to do their roof and tuck pointy next year.
I would, I would, we'd wait.
Well, I don't, I don't...
How much, how much was the total of the roofs? It was less than $200,000 for all three, wasn't it?
It depends on which option you pick with the Carnegie building, then Carnegie around.
About $200 is what I have mine with earlier.
Right. Yeah. About $200,000 for all three. Currently, we got $335,000. And we're going to take in another $600 plus thousand dollars over the remainder of the year. So to me, you know, take care of the roof first. And we could still do some of these HVAC upgrades.
Kind of on a dollar market level.
Well, I get that. I mean, we don't want to spend it down to zero, but you know, we do have money in GR or in reserves that we can spend that, that's a potential too. This is the last year of this sales action. We need to get some projects done.
I'd like to do all three roofs, too. I just didn't know if it was... With HVACs and boilers and everything else.
Yeah, but even the boilers at Carnegie, Greg says they're $35,000. I mean, maybe it's more, maybe it's not.
It should be pretty close to that.
But, and so that's kind of why. And the sidewalks, you know, that's $20,000. I think that the freezer at juvenile, something, I don't know, did that grant fall through?
Yeah, it fell through.
But, I mean, we've been talking about that for a while. And, you know, some of these little things, if they need a metal door replacement at juvenile for $5,000, I mean...
That's what we had...
I'm not sure.
That's what we had talked about.
What's that?
That's what we had talked about.
We were kind of waiting on you guys before we go out and do it on anything. I mean, just for that stuff on that. Put it out.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we even look at these windows for help, you know? You know, with our long-term plans, it seems like we're all over the place on that, but we got a company in here that's going to be doing windows right now. And so, you know, if they're down, they may give us a good number to stay and do some more.
How much would it ask for?
Well, we'd have to bid.
Yeah, I mean...
Yeah, they are on a state courtroom agreement, I believe. What? I believe they're on Jordan except for basement, they are on a state courtroom agreement to some... For windows, doors, stuff, or other things.
How do we make your building so nice, Christie? You want lovely?
Can you make it bigger?
Yes. Trailers.
Trailers?
I heard you go put trailers.
Yeah.
I have a third floor.
We're going to do that, let me leave them off.
Well...
Yes, I think that this way... And you get a 5% reduction if you all move.
Yeah, I think Greg had some reservations.
After talking with, I'm not going to name names, but I don't feel it's right to tell that person's... They, this company is low bid right now.
You're talking about Marshall?
Marshall. I talked to a company down in Springfield that this company did the roofs. It was a state building and they ended up with an issue, but they started to work the project great and it took forever to finish it. And then when the inspector came in, the inspector had all kinds of issues, but now the person I spoke to that state was supposed to look her boss and get back to me yesterday, and she has not done that yet. So I am not feeling real good about backing up at all. Especially after they, one of their jobs was handle, and they went two weeks over, they didn't get charged with the damages because they left almost $3,000 worth of material on the job. So I don't feel comfortable backing up at all. If you go to the next lowest, break it out, all seasons, we checked their backgrounds. They were good. Nobody had anything bad to say about them. Missouri builders we've used in the past have had no issues with. Hawkins I've had no issue with, and weather crafts too, we don't work on them also. If you go down to the bids for courthouse, lowest one for courthouse was Missouri builders. If you go to the next one, health department was all season roofing, and then weather crafts and Carnegie building. But if you give them all three, Missouri builders, they do have a five, five out of each of the four, all three buildings.
If we decide on what we want to try to accomplish this year, it's going to take two months probably to get it out there, bid, and awarded, I would say.
Stuff that's not bid?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I'd say about a month, if it was a priority, but yeah.
Jennifer's already got the information for the boilers and the information for the HVAC for this building. Now, Chris, you and I had discussed about switching, we still work the VRF. VRF's going to cost you between $25 and $30 per foot of this building. There's $21,000 per foot. Oh, you're looking at about $600,000 to change for the VRF.
The boiler is going to spend $400 on what? Or that's what we had in there for something.
$400 for the courthouse. And that number's going to go up too next year. I need to update some of my numbers. It's pulling the last nine months usage for this building for electric. We spent almost $28,000 of electric in this building in nine months. And this building, like I said, is a little over $21,000 per foot. Courthouse is $47,000 per foot, and courthouse next month, we spent $27,000 of electric. I've had mining companies come in and let it, there really no more fishing we can go on, light poles we're using in here. My biggest thing looking at the bills is if the HVAC is, there's something wrong. I know Debbie, correct me if I'm wrong, eight to 10 years ago, they had a problem with the energy system they had in here, pride or something, and they just patched it back together at that time. So it's just, I've had two companies looking at all these units in here, and the thing we were finding on every unit in here was just kept back into the project, connected to the project. I mean, rough numbers of $300,000, $25,000, just rough numbers. But then again, we're fixing old equipment again, and how long has that old equipment been less? So. Do you spend $100,000, $125,000 fix old equipment, or do you invite the boiler to spend $35,000 per foot and go with the whole business? Then every office can control their own, whether they want heat or if they want cooling all year round. I know summertime, it's hot on that side of the building. Inside buildings gets cool, you know, cover stats here in one location.
Yeah, I got a bunch of emails too from the property attorney on there.
I mean, it's, you know, we need more cooling upstairs, it's rough numbers upstairs. They probably could use another $80,000 or $80,000 or more for our cooling. Because like, when they asked, they didn't have any other, any more fan units up there, excluding...
We do think about this building as probably the best productive one because utility cost is a lot higher than this one, and actually ends up being a courthouse.
If we can get this building done where we've got the roof, and we've got the windows, and we've got the HVAC, and other than you guys want carpet, painting, Larry wants paint.
Well, the HVAC in this one's going to be $400,000 to $600,000.
Yeah, I know.
So that's going to wipe out all your...
Oh.
I mean, I, I would tend to look to get all of Carnegie done. And so we get the roof down, we can seal the building exterior at $100,000, we could replace the boiler and tops for $35,000. Still leave us a lot left. Do the roofs, and then, I mean, if we package, if we package our HVAC, and obviously this building needs it, courthouse is going to need it at some point too. It's going to be a big number, but I don't know. We're going to get a whole lot better bid if we got a bigger project.
Yep. Back those two together, there's probably $100,000.
The courthouse isn't low value.
Those paint units over there, boilers not, no. Chiller outside is, we probably got maybe, if nothing goes wrong this summer, let's give it a bunch of hours on it. Make it two, make it three more years out of it, because they'll have to be rebuilt. Paint core units over there, most of those are bid seven units, we train no longer parts for. Parties, we change those units out, we cook all the ones that are good, scrap them out, we got spare over here, $40,000. Like Chris said, you know, practice together, maybe we get a better deal.
So, here's what I'd like to, like to do, I'll just throw it out there. So I'd like to do all three roofs at about $200,000. I'd like to go ahead and try to get sidewalks and handrails done, you know, as soon as the windows are done, later this year, 20,000. The boilers at Carnegie's $35,000. The metal door at Pringer for $5,000. The freezer at Pringer for $10,000. We got the bathroom and painting at Pringer, I don't know what needs to be done there, but there's $50,000 there. You know, whether we spend that or not, but I mean, just try to get, you know, some type of a bid going there. And then we've got to upgrade light fixtures here in the annex.
We've done a lot of that already, so it's...
But we could probably do more. I mean, I was just trying to pick some smaller numbers there. But that's about, it's about $335,000. And I'd also like to do, I'd also like to bid to seal the Carnegie building. We got that estimated at $100,000, and that pretty much takes care of all of Carnegie. And then it leaves some bigger projects, depending on how things come in, you know?
That's what I was trying to say, if we take care of one building and we're done, kind of done with this, I was thinking that's the Carnegie's fine. And then...
I mean, I guess it's about $435,000, which we got $335, now that dispensed $435. So we still got almost that amount left, $450,000 of what's remaining. So we could possibly do some more. You know, I've got Greg looking at this pigtail thing and trying to come up with some other limited solution to just power up the kitchen and a little heat, all the heat at Pringer. You know, rather than trying to power up all the whole building, an 800 amp service or whatever it is, but... And then once we get all this stuff done, then we can start moving into repairs and paintings of these walls and stuff. Some of these numbers are just awful big, but courthouse is probably going to cost a lot. But once the windows are done, then we can start repairing some of the walls and doing some painting. I mean, and I believe that, besides HVAC, and maybe we, maybe we've got to do the HVAC before we start repairing walls.
Yeah, that's probably true.
So, or at least look at it.
I'd just like to get some of our buildings done.
The other monster that we haven't talked about is that one too.
Thanks, Debbie. Well, that's what we got to say first. Before we do all this or anything to Carnegie, unless we're going to keep Carnegie, we're going to keep Carnegie and finally spend money on it, but if we're going to do something with the old jail and go up, then we don't need to be spending quarter million dollars on Carnegie. We can give it to the historical society and might then play with it.
The library would, would take it whenever...
We'll give it to the city or somebody else to put a quarter million dollars into it. We can use that for the jail, because we had a plan for the old jail. It came up more than what we had at the time, so I'd rather not necessarily spend this down. I pretty much agree with everything else you said, especially the sidewalks, but that's somebody that they're not handicap technical replacement, and they said, I don't know who designed our handicap accessible stuff, the sidewalk for terrible. So we do need to address that. Probably just need to address even the handicap signs because they have no clue where to go. Says it on the side of the building.
Yeah, I've watched some people try...
I think it's because of when the security payment changed, otherwise we're a very handicaper.
Well, if nothing else, put a blue stripe to it. I don't know. It's because she said she couldn't figure it out. There's a sign on the side of the building, only reason I do that is because we put it there. So, the Carnegie is kind of the one that I'm not crazy about spending money on. But if we're going to have to spend it on it to keep it functional for the next couple or three years, then we have to back to the board and do that. I don't mind doing these other ones and going ahead and moving forward with those because we do have the money sitting there. But like I said, I wouldn't mind also taking some of that money and putting it in a kitty and using it for the old jail or for, we're looking at something for the health department. Public Works is going to be on doing a building out there, and washroom, what do we call that?
Washbag.
Washbag, washroom. I think we need to start looking at if there's some grants available for the electric and stuff here. Because a lot of times, if you're going to do some kind of energy saver stuff...
How long have you been working? You talking to Amber?
Amber's not the only one though. I mean, we used to have inspection consulting, and I haven't heard anything from them, we haven't paid a bill for them, but we used to have some people that looked at that stuff specifically for us, so...
Last time I talked to her, there was nothing out there.
We don't, we haven't, I haven't heard from them in a year and a half, so we ain't no further around for them. So, I mean, no offense, but all of us in here aren't going to be the resources total available, so we need to look at other ideas. So, I'd say health roof, juvenile freezer, I'm just naming off a few things, metal door.
A lot of them are pretty small, but...
Yeah, we could knock a bunch of little stuff off that list, that just would make the working conditions nicer for everybody. I don't care if it's even paint, painting the place. There's some flyers and stuff in Larry's office. I've been to windows here in this building too. I don't know how much that would help the energy.
That's, yeah, it seems to be just looking at numbers for gas usage during the last year, and like it, like it just from April to October, it's just crazy.
Because you have the sun beating down upstairs too, once it comes in these windows. It's cooling all day long, just trying to keep up.
I agree. I mean, at one time, we talked about trying to get rid of Carnegie and so we didn't have to spend all this money, but you know, a roof's kind of important. I think it's, I lived its life. So, you know, I don't mind taking a look at revisiting old jail, but it's $4 million. I mean, I'm just, I'm not ready to spend $4 million to get what little we're going to get out of that. You know, our last plan, basically, was more court space. That doesn't really help us with the successor.
Well, if we give them a new, bigger courtroom, we can take over one of the old courtrooms. I've never been in there where all the courtrooms were full. They don't need enough court. They could use a bigger one, more functional one for more people.
Do what?
Just to be over here and just about.
That's fine. I'm not ready to say anything. I'm not ready to say anything.
Well, I mean, or if we, we did something, we may not have to put a courtroom in it, it couldn't be all.
Yeah.
Still becomes an issue of a parking, you know, I mean, we give up Carnegie, we give up a lot of parking over there. So now we got, you know, more parking to pay for, or another lot to buy, or. You know, it goes back to what we talked to them about, I don't know, a year or more. We're, we're landlocked, we don't have any place to go, you know, there's time. There'll be an active parking here close, and we pay a pretty good penny for parking, and so. Now that we wanna buy these properties and build a parking lot.
I think somewhere down the roadside, Mark will fish. Gonna be available, we can use for parking.
Thought they had a lot right back there, just look back into that. There's plenty of parking.
The one that matters.
People just don't wanna walk.
And then, I mean, so we could, we could talk about health too, I mean, so they're, they're busting seams.
Somewhere we're gonna have to do something. And you have this, we have some big stuff coming up, if, I mean, if we do the jail, that's a lot of money. Find a building for health department, that's gonna be. Some money, I, I don't know.
Well, it's a cat and mouse thing.
Yeah, I, I, I'd almost say that we're gonna have the Carnegie building for the next, at least the next three to four years, so. I, the plans that we had to add on over here, I still think are a good plan, and I think we might, if we're gonna do it, we need to put that other floor on it, which adds to the cost of it.
Okay, look at that, with four floors.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's where the cost.
That's where the cost went up, that was before I came in, but I, I've got those plans, I look at them every now and then.
And the other thing is, we need, we need to redo that building, you can also see the look of that old, that old area that's in there. Parts have begun to scavenge, they're supposed to be getting the roughed up and remodeled for that one. Remodulate, stretch spaces, tear the old one out, put a bigger one in. As far as so you can get a, a current new thing down.
I, I'd just like to make a decision, you know, if we're gonna, we're gonna get rid of Carnegie, let's decide that. Let's, let's try to move so that we can get rid of it, we're gonna.
But if you're gonna get rid of it, you've gotta find some.
I get that, I get that, but I mean, you know, we, we've been talking about this forever, and, you know, some of us have come up with ideas that maybe the others don't like, and that's fine, but I mean, if we say, our goal is to get rid of Carnegie.
Okay.
Okay?
And then we need to do the addition, we need to tear down jail, and I think, I think Jeff and I are more.
That's fine.
leaning towards that, because I'd really like to keep as much as we can downtown.
That's fine, but then, then the second one is, is what are we gonna do at health? Okay, I mean, we've looked at several different buildings. And, you know, the cost of purchase and then rehab and whatever, I think is outweighs the cost of just construction.
Yeah, dude, I think, I think.
I mean, so, you know, if we're gonna, if we need a new health building, let's, let's take a look at that, and let's do something there, and then maybe we don't have to do all this stuff at health, I mean, you know, a roof's kind of important.
Yeah, that's, that, and that should get back if you sell the building. Some of the stuff that Karen's looking at at MSP, there is some space allocated for public buildings, so I I keep, I keep bringing that up, I think to me, that would be more important than a baseball stadium.
You're, you're getting to tell us chicken and egg, you know, but if we wanna, we want a new building for health, let's go find a place and let's, let's, let's work towards that. I mean, but if we're just gonna sit, we're gonna wait on MSP and all this other stuff, I mean, we've been waiting on MSP for, what, seven years? I mean.
Well, then why don't we, then we just need to fix up Carnegie and keep it, then we need to give high priority, health would be our, something we would do before we would do this addition at the jail.
The health one goes thirty, the health roof is thirty thousand, a hundred and thirty thousand for Carnegie roof. That's why I'd rather just wait on Carnegie roof and go ahead, but the roof on the health department, because I think their roof is in worse shape of all of you, so.
And like Sam and I talked, we could wait, bank it another year as far as the roof goes. Boiler, we're starting to make it, it's done. So we'll have to replace it this year.
So it sounds like, sounds like we wanna get rid of Carnegie.
Well, the boiler's only thirty-five thirty.
Right.
That's not a big.
Right.
Money item, so that one doesn't bother me as much as the hundred and twenty-five on the, on the roof does. I mean, that's a big chunky piece for something else. And I think that roof could make up a hundred and another year, I think we could nurse it along for three years if we had to. And I think seeing what the sales tax does today makes a difference on what we do in the next five years. And that's kind of what I was, I forgot this was on there today, I didn't look at it real close, I apologize for that, but I think after today, we know a little more what we have to work with and what direction we can go. At some point, we're just gonna have to move, like you said. I'm fine with saying today, let's go ahead and do the health department and the annex roofs, getting them done. But I'd rather hold off on Carnegie, if you two wanna go ahead and go with Carnegie and say, we just need to get it fixed, hell, we might keep it, you know?
Yeah, well, that's, that's, that's what I want, I want us to decide, is are we gonna keep it, are we gonna take care of it, or are we gonna punt it?
My idea is, the old jail, we go with that plan, we'll get the money together for it, and then get rid of Carnegie. But if we think we're gonna need more room down the road, why would you get rid of Carnegie and not have any more room in this footprint? So you just keep Carnegie and.
Carnegie's not a bad building, it's really not. I know that they're running out of space on there too, but.
So we might just keep it off.
Well, Paulie Pater, I think has added a number of employees.
He's gone from, I mean, there was six employees when I started here, I think he's up to eleven now.
Yeah.
So, I mean, he's had quite a few upstairs.
Now, we have to give them space, right? By law?
By, by law.
Okay.
But that's a big amount.
No, no. Talking to Karen Miller at Boone County, I said, what do you do with, with the public vendors? And she said, as little as possible, and at that time I had gone over and they were complaining about parking. Which is, again, I felt like, well, talk to Jeff, but I didn't, and so I looked.
Sam?
So then I talked, I talked to Karen Miller, I said, what do you do about parking for the public vendors? She goes, we do nothing, that's not in our agreement, we don't have to provide them parking, we don't do anything. And I said, well, we're a little nicer.
The public and the health department moved out, and they were in the basement in one little room.
Yeah.
Because there's room over there, they've just kind of taken over, you know, more area.
I turned their, their offices are nice, they've just got so many people in that space. And of course, then they complain about, it's hot in the summertime and all, you know, everybody.
Last summer we had any points, I don't know where. We closed it, we installed, you know, it was nice to go for a bit.
But it is a, it is a, a, a good building, I mean, it's a nice building, just turn Chris's offices, we never. The public vendors, I was.
Whatever your guys, whichever direction you want me to go with, we can go.
So, what do you wanna do today?
Well, we need, we are, we are.
What about the roofs?
We are trying to award the contracts on the roof, because Christie's is, we have a lot of rain. You know, it, it doesn't look real good to have buckets, and you get mold, and that one bathroom, I think that was mold. I just, it's not, you know, when you're, you're, you're supposed to be a place where people come for help, and it just doesn't, it doesn't meet the criteria very well.
It's public health, public. No offense, Christie, but, you know, it's public health, you're coming in for free help.
Well, that is, that's still, that's.
You don't give them a brand new hospital too? Can build a, make it nice and yellow.
It was only thirty-four million dollars. We just added one.
All right, so, did you guys?
I'm fine with the courthouse annex roof and the health department roof. If you all wanna do Carnegie roof now, then that's two votes, so. I'm also all right with going ahead and doing something with the sidewalks. The juvenile freezer.
What about the boiler at Carnegie?
Yeah, we have to do it, I think that, I think that has to be.
That one's got a lot smaller frost tags.
That has to be.
Okay, you good with that one?
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Metal door at Pringer.
Yeah.
Freezer at Pringer.
Yeah.
Good. Bathrooms and painting, or painting at Pringer.
I think we can hold off on that, I mean, if you wanna do it, basically there's gonna be a gut job and we're done.
Yeah, I went and looked at those, those things look like they're back in the sixties, I mean, it's, it's.
Then you don't have to be in there as long and look at it. Do your number and then get out.
Vintage is coming back too, you know? Wallpaper's coming back.
If it's sanitary place for you to have a sit down, then it's okay. It doesn't, what are you wanting to do with it?
Well, Michael hasn't, I haven't heard any more since we've given him.
I mean, some of that was the bathroom, some of it was painting, I mean, they've got all HVAC done, did any painting over there?
Uh, it wouldn't hurt to probably repaint the old building.
I don't know, I'm saying.
You got some, there's wallpaper on there, I don't know, are we gonna paint over the wallpaper?
Clean up stuff at fifty thousand dollars. Yeah, golden broom.
I'm not saying it's gonna be fifty, but I don't know what.
With that fifty also, there's two bathrooms on the administration side. The others are the other bathrooms from the juvenile. Those bathrooms. When they were installed, need to be got it when we're done.
Well, those take a little more, because they have to be security stuff, and then.
Okay, we'll bid and see where it comes in.
Bring the plan to us before you bid, and I was, I'm just curious what you all wanna do with it.
I'm just gonna do it like, tear the sheetrock out, put the sheetrock back in, we wanna fix your showers, just bring your toilets, nothing fancy.
Okay, so I was saying, maybe we'll look at it.
Are, are there plans still to paint carpet in this building after new windows are put?
Wait, we got to that part yet? But I think that's still on there.
Yeah. It's just we've got so many things on our plate, that's. Maybe a little further down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe it's still on the list, but before that, the HVAC was, we've done something else too, before that, because you've got whole walls. So, dropped it on the floor.
Did you have that nice wall, so you're going to keep there?
We have a lot of that.
His office is fine. Okay.
Okay.
All attorneys, they deserve to burn a little bit. I guess we can move our offices upstairs, let the prosecutor have this level.
Except for, uh.
Thank you.
And we can have that balcony up on the roof too. Oh, you wanna move me to it?
Carnegie building.
Continuing to upgrade light fixtures in this building, is that something that we wanna try to do?
Is that boss that done, or?
Oh, it's done, there's still some stuff to do downstairs.
Do we have some of that, their motion, activate the stuff like in the stairwells and hallways and stuff? Because I've come in here after hours several times, and the place is lit up like a dressing room. Hallways, stairwell, we'll probably get students some days, they might probably come in and be dark, because I turn the lights off.
There's an emergency light, I think.
Yeah, there's several.
I'm shutting the emergency lights off, dude.
No, there's no motions for stairwells. I don't know if you can do that like them.
Okay. So, the yes or no, or?
Yeah, I can't move it with it.
Okay, man, all pretty small stuff.
Yeah.
So let's, let's go back to the, the roofs. So, you wanna hold off on Carnegie?
I think Carnegie. And health's plenty for.
Okay, hold off on Carnegie till next year, and then do the roof and do the.
I mean, we can bring this back in thirty days, after we see what happens today too.
Well, I think we need to, we need to, we need to get them going on Christie's, and if we're gonna do that.
Christie's needs to be the.
We need to, yeah, I mean, we're gonna be going into our rainy season, so.
Okay.
I think we all agreed on health.
Yeah, let's hold off on Carnegie, let's do here and have. So, do we need a motion to do that?
We need to know what you need to have vendors.
My, my choices, Missouri Builders for to make sure I say this right, for the annex and then all seasons for the health department. Forty-one five ninety-four for the annex and twenty-seven for the health.
I'm all right with that, if you've had some complaints about the Marsaw, and then I'd also give a little weight to the local vendors, and there's two thousand dollars difference in that, that is.
Local people too.
Well, I like having a local vendor, and if we have a leak, you don't have, I mean, I've had it with my building, it's eighteen eighty-four, and I put a new roof on, I and then the man who put it on died, and it started leaking again, and I was like, so then I had, had it patched, and I ended up having to put, you know, in three years, I put two roofs on it, and.
Well, if you look at it too, the plywood replacement is cheaper on the other ones, in their days of completion is lower, so I think there's plenty to weigh there to make it the lowest of best.
I just think if we have problems, these are here, so they're gonna come.
Yeah, ideally, I'd like to keep it locally, but I mean, I gotta, I gotta look out for our dollars too, and so, you know, if we knock out Marsaw because of poor performance or whatever, I mean, then lowest and best is Missouri Builders and all seasons. For both, so. You guys good with that?
I'm here with that.
I'm able to award the courthouse annex roof to Missouri Builders and the health department roof to all seasons roof.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are we rejecting the Carnegie building or revisiting that?
We're gonna hold on that for now.
How long are those bids?
Well, maybe another ninety days.
Well, just make sure, at the end of ninety days, we can come up there and we can talk about it. You know, that's.
So can we, can we bring this back here in thirty days or two weeks or whatever, and try to get some direction as far as the annex now? I mean, we may not always agree on what we wanna do, but let's, let's try to work towards some solution. You know, before we spend a ton more money on Carnegie and a ton more money on health, let's try to figure out what we wanna do.
Well, I would say if we're doing, if we do a new health building, we're probably gonna keep Carnegie for a while. So I then, then, then I, it makes most sense to go ahead and fix up Carnegie. And continue to use it and give Christie, give Christie her new building one way or another, and and I think if we, if we, if we end up building or, you know, buying a health, a building for health department, that's going, that's not gonna be cheap, and so that's, you've still got the offices in the Carnegie building, so we're still gonna, I think, we will have those longer.
But if we, you know, the way I look at it, if we do something for health, I mean, it's, that's a building that's gonna last for twenty years before we really start having to maintain stuff, so. You know, it may be two to three million dollars, I don't know what that's gonna cost, but when we look at some of these older buildings and having to gut them and rehab them, I mean, we're, we're looking at the same amount, so.
Yeah, it's. The one we looked at, the one we looked at a couple of weeks ago, like, yeah, by the time we bring that everything up.
And hopefully we.
Yeah, and then the parking, it was, it just.
Have multiple issues, and there's probably some property sitting around that maybe they can or whatnot that we could buy at a decent price. Get something built. Yeah, I mean, I think it's. Yeah, I mean, I think it's either the whole jail project or the health project.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I don't think you can do both, so I think what is the most, what is, what is, what takes priority?
Right.
And, so.
So let's just think about that. Let's think about that, let Christie schmooze us, it'll obvious.
We bid the boiler for Carnegie already?
Yeah.
So do we wanna do that?
Mm-hmm, that's what I was trying to get them some traction, started some stuff.
Okay. So you, we did go through all that part, then what other part do we need?
Have we bid the door over a pringer?
No, we haven't bid the door.
So we need to do the door, pringer?
Yeah, okay, all the things that I mentioned, did you get all that?
Can we run it one more time, please?
The freezer.
If I would that.
Still seems.
I had to throw it.
No, it's not, it's maybe five hundred.
Okay.
Somebody making a list here?
I got, I got one, so, so we approved the two roofs. Sidewalks and handrails here, we're gonna bid those later this year.
After the windows are done.
Looking for the boiler at Carnegie, we're gonna bid that. Metal door pringer, freezer pringer, and okay to bid the bathrooms and the painting and pringer?
I'd just look at them, I'd, yeah.
Get some bids on it.
Doesn't hurt to bid it.
Yeah.
Continue to upgrade the light fixtures.
I'll hear it, I'll hear it, you and I talked about it, it's, he had mess in the storage areas, those lights that are up on the ceiling. We need to replace those along.
Those can, that storage compartment?
Yeah, back there where they.
You gonna get us a number on that, I mean, what, or you got a rough guess, or?
I don't know, I'll tell me it.
It's gonna be way up there, but.
Replace the light.
Those D twelve, HOs, you can get them bolted on.
Just go put some cheap lighting. Just go put some cheap lighting. Remember what, that's over in the filing areas and stuff, storage?
That's thirty-five foot ceiling, I don't have any of the other.
Take some posts and hang them on the file if they ain't, and take a string, I'm dead serious.
No, I have that shopping mall right up there.
See, you put a post on there, you plug something in, there you go.
Get the string of lights.
I guess I'm just being tight.
The big extension cord with the bolt to screw in.
No, that's really like.
Stop one right there.
Hey, we actually moved ahead though.
Even though with all that that we spent, we're still probably only spending less than two hundred thousand dollars, so we, we still got. You know, I'd like to get this back on the agenda after we see what happens today and try to finish some more of these projects, at least the two bid.
Yeah.
You know, so that we can make some decisions and try to spend as much money of this sales tax that we can this year while. While we have it, now, I didn't mean that we have to spend every nickel.
Well, we've got so much that needs to be done, so it's just kinda.
We need to look at the windows on here too, cause we got too many other things that we're sitting, not doing here and taking care of this building maintenance-wise without them windows. If we do the windows, that may take care of part of the energy stuff.
What we're doing, we're doing.
In the annex.
Yeah, oh yeah, after, that's part of this whole job, we're doing that first and then we're doing this.
That's part of the ninety-nine windows?
No, no, this is separate, this is, no, this is.
That's the whole project.
The Wilson group is doing our windows.
Seven hundred thousand dollars was the whole building.
Yes, we're doing.
That was both.
That was both.
Yeah, so for a while there, we're gonna be, we're gonna be probably, you know, just working in here, cause our offices are gonna be.
Is that on camera?
Offices are gonna, no, that, no, it's.
Yeah, we're, we're doing both.
That's part of this, they gotta be done by.
That's what L V was talking about, when we get the windows down here.
I counted the windows, and there's ninety-nine of them in the courthouse.
Yeah.
Yeah, we must bid separately.
Okay.
But no, we're, that'd be, no, we're, we're.
I'm gonna need a bigger cuss door. My coffee's gone, let's go. Oh, let's do that after salary discussion on Thursday too.
Due to the cost of money, so we're.
We've been talking about this since I've been up here.
Well, this is good, no, no, we're, we're doing something.
An hour.
So I think that's good, we're doing something.
Yeah, I just, I just think that, I mean, it's gonna be a hard decision whether we, whatever we do, but I mean, that's gonna cost a lot of money. But we just gotta live forward somewhere so that we're getting something done.
Will we leave money in there for the freight car for the visiting commissioner, so? Kinda like the Cape Girardeau.
Cadillac Escalade.
No, I, I, I think if Carrie has a Corvette, I think a red Corvette would be good. And then the sheriff could use it for high-speed chase.
Otter said yes.
No.
I loan it to the sheriff.
No.
We can make another Q R V, quick response.
There we go, there we go, Michael. I can stick an oxygen tank in that trunk, and that's not a really trunk, but some Band-Aids and. Okay, I worked, okay, do we have any other issues to come before? The commission?
Huh?
Huh?
I know we stand in recess till four thirty.
All in favor?
Aye.
Does that question ask one, I read?
Oh, that's fine.
Okay.